Their workload issues, we aren't paid competitive wages because our human resources staff has slowed down any compensation study. The fact is that this impacts our community. We are unable to handle our work workload because management won't take the responsibility for it. And this has resulted in communities not being provided the highest quality of services because there is no one to provide those services. The very services that the fiber you say that you want to have here in Monterey County. This is the time for you to act to protect us, to respect us and to pay. Protect your community by investing in your workforce. I hope that you do the right thing. We will remember when election times come. Together, our community tribes divided, the only people that are hurt are your workers and the communities that we serve. I hope you have a get a nice summer break. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Here we are again. My name's Alicia Metters. I am a social worker for Monterey County and Family Children's Services. I started working for the county as an eligibility worker actually in 1997. I still, as a running joke, say you made an exception and hired me when I was five years old. Thank you very much. I am going to say that I am a proud native of the Monterey Peninsula. And we who are in the fields that we represent today, you've already heard, you already know. We serve our communities because we're servants. We want the best for our community. We want to serve those who are on the outskirts of the haves and the have-nots. We want to represent those who don't have a voice. And at this particular time, we feel as if our voice is not being heard. We simply want to have healthcare that covers us. Because in this country, it should not be an option. It should not be denied to any citizen in this country to receive appropriate healthcare and for it not to send us into an economic deluge because we become sick or we can no longer work. We ask that you do respect us. Show us the dignity that we deserve. We showed it as we served this county through the pandemic and it's not over yet. We know there's a variant, another variant coming out every day. We're going to go through the alphabet with the coronavirus. We again ask you to respect us, protect us, pay us. We love this county and we don't want to have to move. As I continue to say, I'm staying, I'm not going. I'm not going to be run out of the county because I can't afford to live here. Thank you. And we are just admonishing you to do the right thing.
Is there any other public? Thank you for your comments and thank you for being here today. Is there any other public comments in the audience present with us? If you could approach the front of the room so that we can have you heard. And I believe we have some members on Zoom as well who would like to comment. Gloria, we'll start with Gloria. Gloria, we have a minute and 30 seconds on the clock and we appreciate you joining us for comment today. And Gloria, you'll have to unmute your microphone so that we can hear your comments.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us. Please proceed.
Yes, I'm on the same page as everybody else. We were participating, I participate with my coworkers on different project for the pandemic. And it really is true that when my coworker said, everybody said, oh, thank you. You did a great job and everything. But then when it comes to our benefits, when it comes to protect us, we just don't find that support from you guys. So we really need your support. We need you. We need your help with us. I love the county. I've been in the county for over 20 years and I really wouldn't like to leave the county. And I don't like, I don't, I don't want to be in that situation, only have to move out because I cannot support this. I have to work another side job because I cannot support myself with the salary that I have. And now the benefits, it's going to be worse. So every day we are facing harder and harder time for us. I just wanted to ask you to please, in the name of all my coworkers, they are here working, have no time to participate, but I just say, please help us. Help us, please. That's all I can say.
Thank you for your comments, Gloria. We have next up Arminda. Armita Johnson. And Armita will be followed by Lyle Green Nickerson. Let me do, we should. Okay, we don't have our media. We'll fall. Okay, so next up we have Lyle Green Nickerson, followed by Iris Medina.
Okay.
We've got you. Thank you.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yep, perfect. We've got a minute 30 on the clock. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Lyle. I'm an accounting technician with Child Support Services. I started as an account clerk three years ago and I was grateful for the opportunity to help my community. And I was also grateful that insurance was covered because my starting rate was around $16 an hour, which is not a living wage in Monterey County. Rank can be up to $1,700 to $1,800 a month. And Ruben mentioned, or David mentioned that it was 1,400 for a studio. On top of that, as an accounting technician with Child Support Services, we are very behind on our tasks because we lost two accounting technicians and a senior account clerk. So now we are trying to catch up as best we can. And this is a disservice to the people who really need our services. And so I just ask the county to please start hiring people for my department and also please, please consider giving us the health insurance we deserve. It is one of the best incentives that you can offer your employees, especially since the colas that we get are very minimal. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Lyle. Next up, we have Iris Medina. Iris, we'll give you permission to unmute your microphone and share your comments with us.
Hi, my name is Iris Medina. I've worked for the Monterey County Clinic Services for 14 years. I joined the county because of their benefits and the good health coverage. I think that it's really unfair that you want to take our healthcare coverage away. The cost of living here in the county is outrageous. I have two beautiful young boys, one of them who's chronic asthmatic with a heart murmur. And the other one who falls under the asterisk is the 22-month-old and he will be starting therapy. I don't know how I will be able to afford health coverage, rent, on top of all the services that he needs and to help my children to proceed and go on in life. The cost of living here is outrageous. The pay that we have is not enough. We deserve hazardous pay. I've been at work every day since this pandemic. No one was prepared for, we're still not prepared for, we're all learning together. We put our lives on the line. And we didn't have the option to work from home. We have to be at work every day, providing good services to our patients. And we deserve to be respected. We deserve to be protected and we deserve to get paid. We do put our life on the line still and we're still continuing to with all these viruses that are coming out with these new viruses. And I please ask you to please consider and give us the protection we need with the health coverage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Iris. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to share public comments this morning before we adjourn our recess to close session? If you are on Zoom and could please raise your hand so that I can call on you. I'm not, are you seeing anyone else? Okay, I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. All right. Thank you all for your comments this morning. We will be recessing to, thank you, recessing to close session. We'll be returning here at 10:30 for the remainder of our public calendar. We don't typically read out emails from public comment, but we do welcome and the board, all of the board offices receive voluminous numbers of emails on a weekly basis. For anyone who would like to submit a written comment for board consideration, our email address is c o b at c o dot monterey dot c a dot u s. And I always encourage communication with the board. Sending a communication to that email address will be distributed to all five board offices as well as the C A O's office as well. So thank you again for being here with us today and thank you for your comments. And we will be back here at 10:30.
...
Mike 4. Okay, Mike 3. Mike 6. Mike 8.
Clerk's mic.
Mike 11. Mike 12. Staff.
I got you.
Podium mic.
Stu? Wireless 2?
Wireless 1?
Oh. I usually start like... Buenos dias, mi nombre es Joseline Martinez, soy la interprete de español para la reunión. Si usted desea hacer un comentario en español y necesita interpretación, por favor venga al frente para las instrucciones. Gracias.
Hello, good morning. I see a Gloria Jaimez with your hand up. I'm gonna allow you to talk. Do you have a question for us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we could hear you. What's, what, do you have a question for us?
No, but I think I can say if there's a Spanish comment that we can have our opinion.
Yes, if you will, if you're gonna be making a public comment in Spanish, we do have a translator. We only ask that you give her time to, to translate what you say, so kinda wait for her, kinda say a few words and then kinda give her a chance to translate. That's the way we're gonna do it, cuz if you, if you go ahead with your whole public comment, it's a lot harder to translate that way.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna put you back on mute.
Okay.
A Bravo, do you have a question? I'm gonna allow you to talk.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you called me, Melody Chrislock?
Melody Chrislock, okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. How do you, how do you notify the board that you wanna speak? Just raise your hand?
By raising your hand, that's, that's, you'll, you'll get called on.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anna Thompson, I'm gonna allow you to talk. Do you have a question for us? Hello, Anna Thompson?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I knew how to turn my microphone on. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
If you're watching us live on Facebook or, do we have echo over here too? Okay, if you're watching us live on Facebook or Zoom, you're also welcome to join us on our Zoom webinar at 224-397-747. Could we get a roll call by the clerk, please?
Good morning, let the record reflect all supervisors are present, with supervisors Alejo and Lopez appearing via video conference, and supervisors Ruth Askew, Adams, and Phillips appearing in person.
Wonderful, thank you. Could we get an announcement of our Spanish interpretation services that are available today, and thank you for joining us?
Buenos dias, Joseline Martinez, interprete de español. Si usted gustaría hacer un comentario público en español, tenemos los servicios de interprete disponibles para usted. Gracias.
All right, next up, we have our pledge of allegiance, and I don't, I'll need to be added as a panelist, so that I can see who's here, but today, I am pleased to welcome Kristin Lundquist, in honor of July being Parks and Recreation Month. Kristin is the Library and Community Services Director for the City of Salinas. She grew up right here in Salinas, learning at an early age the importance of being a part of a team, while participating in a number of after-school sports and enrichment programs. while participating in a number of after-school sports and enrichment programs. Kristin and her dynamic team of recreation professionals have been instrumental in building and sustaining a core of recreation programs and services for the City of Salinas. Under Kristin's leadership, recreation programs have flourished consistently, serving nearly 300,000 annual visits at the city's six neighborhood centers and over 4,000 annual youth sports participants. Kristin, thank you so much for joining us today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great, thank you. Chair Askew, members of the Board of Supervisors, it's absolutely my honor to be here with you. And if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kristin. And thank you for all of the work that you've done in our community to, especially this past year with your team, to keep everyone engaged and connected. We really value the, our local parks and recreation programs. Thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
All right, next up, I just want to thank everyone. We've got an audience today, which is wonderful. We've missed seeing everyone here. The county does have a recommendation in place for indoor masks, so I've got my mask on today indoors, and I would welcome others to follow the county recommendation. Are there any public agenda additions or corrections today?
There are. There is a correction to the general consent calendar, and that is for item number 33 to be pulled from the agenda at the request of the department. And there's a correction to the 1:30 PM schedule matters. Item number 15 is in receipt of a revised attachment B.
All right, we'll make that note for consent. Thank you. We have a handful of ceremonial resolutions today in our agenda, items number two through seven. I'd be happy to accept a motion for action on the ceremonial resolutions, and then we have a few to present. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues on the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion from Alejo, a second from Phillips. Is there any public comment on our ceremonial resolutions this morning before we begin our presentations? I see Gary Malais has his hand raised. Maybe that's for presentation. Gary, are you? No, okay. Seeing no public comment on ceremonial resolutions, we'll take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Lejo.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez.
Aye.
Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew.
Hi. With that, our ceremonial resolutions are approved, and we'll start with a presentation. Item number two is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2021 as Child Support Awareness Month in Monterey County. And I'd like to welcome Daryl McGowan to make a brief presentation. Thank you for joining us today, Daryl.
Good morning. Good morning. Am I on? Yes, I'm good. Awesome. Okay, good morning, Chair Askew, Board members, and members of the public. I'm Daryl McGowan, Director of Child Support Services. It's my pleasure to announce that the month of August 2021 has been designated as Child Support Awareness Month with the, with this year's theme being "Get the Facts." So, a little history. The Child Support Enforcement Program was created as part of the Health and Human Resources Program in 1975. And then in 1997, 1995, on the program's 20th anniversary, Bill Clinton designated every August to be Child Support Awareness Month to recognize the official and critical roles that child support and social services programs play. So here are some of the facts about our department. Number one, we establish parentage. Number two, we establish a child support order and a medical support order. And number three, it's our role to enforce that medical and child support order and distribute those funds to the needy families. We currently serve 13,669 children in our caseload. Last year, we distributed over $41 million in child support collections to the needy families. When COVID-19 hit, our office never closed. We remain open to the public. We have a dedicated staff of 82 members that are just critical in helping to provide that service to the community. And I have a few of them in the audience, and I'd like to just point out, point them out real quick. We have our Chief Attorney, Lisa Ortiz. We have our Child Support Officer and Community Outreach Officer, Yvonne Padilla. Child Support Supervisor, Harriet Huff. Child Support Supervisor, Rochelle Gels. Child Support Officer, Scott Tamanaha. And our Acting Deputy Director, Renee Palito. So, a couple of weeks ago, I sent a survey to our staff saying, hey, what is child support, what's the importance of child support services? And so I got a lot of great responses. And this one really stuck out for me. Our department is a foundation for children and their families. We support the upcoming generations and help provide them with the resource they need while they're growing up in our county. And I thought, huh, you're right on. So, I encourage every parent out there, if you need child support services, please contact our office to get the facts. You can get the facts at our main office in Salinas at 752 LaGuardia Street. Additionally, we have a co-locate office located in King City at the Social Services Building, which is located in 116 Broadway Street, and additionally, at the Social Services Building in Seaside, California, which is located at 1281 Broadway Avenue. At all these locations, we have staff members there where you can get the facts. You can also contact our office at 866-901-3212 to get the facts, or visit our website at mcdcss.org to get the facts. In closing, I'd like to thank the Board for this resolution and also for the support that they provided to our office to help us continue to deliver the critical services to the children and family of Monterey County. So, on behalf of myself and our staff members, thank you to all the Board members for your support. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan, thank you so much. We would like to take a picture with you and your staff, if that's all right. If we could have your staff approach the front, and I'll have my colleagues step down, too. Thank you. All right, thank you, Daryl, and the entire Child Support Services team who was able to join us today. We appreciate and value the work that you do. Every child deserves to have the support from both parents. Next up, item number three is to adopt a resolution commending Emergency Services Planner Patrick Moore upon his retirement from the County of Monterey Emergency Services. We don't have a presentation today, but we do have a nice resolution that we will get delivered to Mr. Moore. Item number four is to adopt a resolution recognizing Patricia Zerunian upon her retirement from the County Health Department and her public service to Monterey County residents. I believe that we have Krista Hahn with the Health Department here to make a few comments for this resolution. Thanks for joining us, Krista.
Thank you, Chair Root, Askew. I believe Patricia's also on over an attendee. If we could move her over to panelist. Is that possible? Okay. And then also, after I make a few comments, then also, our Director of Health, Elsa Jimenez, will also make a few comments. So I'm going to bring in a metaphor for these comments because the Olympics are on, and Patricia, if there was such a thing, would get a gold medal for her public service. She has worked with the Health Department and just retired recently, but she's worked tirelessly over the 15 years that she was with the Health Department and has really contributed in many ways that the Health Department has proceeded forward with being very innovative and received awards for the innovative work we've done. She has produced for us many reports, including our strategic plan, community health assessments, the City of Gonzales chart books of health and well-being, disparities, health profile, hunger in Monterey County. She also was our accreditation coordinator and worked through that five-year process to get us to be nationally accredited in 2019. And she was our Whole Person Care Project Manager. So, for the last several years, she's led that program for us. And it's a program to provide comprehensive case management and supportive services for our county's most vulnerable medical recipients, who are high users of hospital emergency department facilities. It's annually served over 700 people. It's resulted in improved health outcomes in managed diseases like high blood pressure and diabetes, and moved 142 individuals from homelessness to permanent or transitional housing situations. And she really does exemplify that dedication to service and the values of the Health Department. Potentially, Elsa, if you would like to make a few comments as well.
Yes, good morning, Chair Root, Askew, members of the Board, members of the public. I will be brief. I will dearly miss Patricia Zerunian over her career with us. Over the last 15 years, she has really been instrumental in securing grants for the Health Department to increase services to our residents. She's an exceptional grant writer. She's an exceptional trainer and facilitator, helping to bring quality improvement and performance management as part of our organizational culture and structure. Without her, we wouldn't have become the 11th Public Health Accredited Health Department in the state of California. And she, really, anything that we needed her to do, she did. She probably worked as much as three other regular county employees. So, it'll be a big, a big loss for the Health Department, but we're very happy for her and her retirement and her family, and do wish her much luck in future endeavors that she may pursue. So, with that, we'd like to hand it over to Patricia to see if she'd like to say a few words.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Thank you, Elsa and Krista, for those heartfelt words. Before I came to work in the Health Department, my mother-in-law said, "Public health is the most purposeful type of work of one could ever do." And I always found that true. And I am dearly devoted to the residents of Monterey County. And it was my pleasure to work for the county for those 15 years. And thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Patricia, for your service to the county. You, we wish you a well-deserved retirement. And Krista and Elsa, thank you for your comments and for bringing this resolution forward today. Patricia, we do have a framed resolution that we will be getting delivered to you shortly. But thank you again for your service. All right, next up, we have item number five, which is to adopt a resolution honoring head cook Kurt Matthews upon his retirement from the County, Monterey County Probation Department after 33 years of dedicated county service. And I'd like to welcome Kurt Matthews. I'd like to welcome Chief Keating to make some comments today in honor of Kurt Matthews. Do we have Chief Keating?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. We'll pass the microphone over to you.
Morning, Chair Root, Askew, and members of the Board. I'm Chief Probation Officer Todd Keating, and I'm here to celebrate and congratulate Kurt Matthews on his retirement after 33 years of service to the County of Monterey. Kurt has been a part of the probation department for most of his career and has been the head cook for our department for 20 of those 33 years. Kurt has always been dependable and is just a solid person all around. He takes his responsibility seriously, and like I said, he can always be counted on. Kurt, I'm really happy for you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. I don't know if he would like to say some words or not. I believe he's on the attendee side, but I will hand it over to Kurt if he would like to say anything.
And Kurt, thank you. We will bring you over to the panelist side if you'd like to make a few, a few comments. And again, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we have a framed resolution here that we would be, we will get delivered to you. And again, we want to thank you for your service to the residents of Monterey County. Do we have? All right. Kurt, if you should be able to unmute yourself if you wanted to share a couple comments with us. You'll have to manually hit the unmute button on your side, though. All right, well, it looks like we're not able to make that happen. My apologies. But Kurt, Kurt, we wish you well on your retirement, and thank you again for your service to the County of Monterey. And Chief Keating, thank you for bringing this resolution forward for the Board today.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item number six, which is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2021 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Monterey County. We do have a resolution that we won't be presenting today, but I just want to thank all of the folks in Monterey County, specifically the team at Women, Infants, and Children, the WIC program, who really work hard to, 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 to support families and taking care of their, their little ones. We've got lactation consultants at Natividad. The County of Monterey, I think, has worked really hard over the, over the time that I've been here to, to support families and their choice of how to feed their children, their babies. Item number seven is to adopt a resolution celebrating the Community Foundation of Monterey County for their work in assisting with Monterey County's COVID-19 recovery efforts. And it is my absolute honor today to bring this resolution forward. We have Community Foundation CEO Dan Baldwin here with us. And I just want to recognize the fact that, that this past year has been just beyond challenging for so many of the local governments, for our nonprofit partners, for businesses, for families, for workers in our community. And the county's response would not have been nearly as effective as it was without the partnership of community nonprofits and the philanthropy community. Really, Dan Baldwin and the Community Foundation stepped up to partner with the county to help us to distribute philanthropic dollars out into the community where they were needed most critically, and also to work in partnership with contracts through the county to deliver the Community Health Worker Program. The Community Foundation stepped up to coordinate a county COVID collaborative where information can be shared, really sort of stepping in to fill some of the unmet needs that existed. So, I want to say thank you to Dan. I want to say thank you to everyone at the Community Foundation. And I want to say thank you to all of the volunteers who really jumped in to work on the COVID collaborative in partnership with the Community Foundation and the county this, this past year. We couldn't have navigated this crisis in quite the same way without the leadership and support. So, we'll step down and have a, have a quick photo, Dan. And if you want to make a couple comments, we'd welcome you to come up to the front as well.
Askew. Supervisor Adams, Supervisor Phillips, tremendous to see you all in person, live and in person. It's, there's just been a blip in our consciousness for a while, and now it's very real. The Community Foundation exists only because of the generosity of the people of Monterey County. And that generosity isn't just in financial support, it's in community support, it's in volunteerism, it's in a willingness to work together. And I think this last year really exemplified it, and we're, we're just thrilled to be able to be in a position to leverage that spirit and to align a lot of energies to create, you know, much stronger outcomes for everybody. This is celebratory, but I am going to throw a little cautionary tale out there. We don't know what the future looks like even yet today, so let's all stay together, work together. And I do, I gladly accept this, especially on behalf of the staff and the Board of Directors and donors of the Community Foundation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. And we'll step down and take a quick photograph as well. Thanks.
If I rob a bank on the way out, no one's going to know it's me.
Probably about the third bank we rob.
Picked a lot of pockets.
Yes, that's my job.
All right. Thank you. Doesn't matter if my smile's frozen. Thank you. It's a pleasure to see you out in the world here.
All right. Next up, we're moving on to our appointments. We have appointments number eight through 11, and I'd be happy to entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Phillips, a second from Adams. Is there any public comment on our appointments today? Right, seeing none, we will take a roll call vote on appointments.
Supervisor Leho.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez.
Aye.
Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. And I'd just like to briefly thank Chris Long for stepping into the primary position on the East Garrison Community Services Advisory Committee. With his promotion to the primary position, we are now recruiting for two alternate members on the CSD Advisory Committee. And also wanted to just welcome Dr. Harris to the Central California Alliance for Health Board. Definitely look forward to working with you. Moving right along to our consent calendar, today we have approval of consent calendar items 20 through 49. And I believe that item 33 was pulled by staff, by the department. So this would be items number 20 through 49, with the exception of 33. Do any of my colleagues want to pull any items for question or comment?
Yes, I have comments on item 36, but I believe that it's going to be pulled by the public.
Okay. Any others to pull for question or comment? Okay, I'd like to pull item number 25 and 29 for comment, and then I would like to pull item 36, 42.2 and 41, I'm sorry, 41.2 and 41.3 for a separate vote. So that's 36. All right. Is there any member of the public who wants to comment on the consent calendar today? We'll welcome you either to approach the podium or raise your hand if you are on Zoom. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom with a hand raised for public comment on the consent agenda today. I'll bring it back to Supervisor Adams. Did you want to comment on 36?
Yes, thank you. This item deals with contracts at Laguna Seca. And I just want to add a couple of clarifying thoughts just on, on my own. And that's that when I first saw this item, I didn't, I didn't really grasp what it meant. I didn't at all. I thought we were talking about Mr. Norigi's particular personal contract, his management contract. I didn't understand that what we were actually talking about was the... Thank you. What we were actually talking about is this was not an increase in the management contract. It was actually providing the track with the needed resources that it has to have in order to be able to conduct its business with the vendors and others who need to execute the various track events. And one of the things that I'm conscious of is that there are so many small vendors, like the people who do the tents and the people who do the catering, et cetera, who have suffered just as all of us have from COVID and are not able, as they have been able to in the past, to front the expense. They need, we, us, the county essentially, to be able to front the money to be able to continue to do the work that they have to do for us to be able to put on races that people want to come to attend. So I just want to make sure that people understand that I'm very supportive of this. I feel like it's like a dry period loan that we do to other entities that we have our relationships with. So I'm supportive of the action. I just want to be sure that it's really clear to, to people what it is that we're doing and why this is coming before us. So, thank you. Probably didn't do justice to explaining it, but that's how it worked in my mind.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. And we do have the public comment hand raised. I believe it was for item number 36 as well. We'll give Mike permission to unmute, and we'll continue with our minute 30 for public comment this morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Please understand, I'm not opposed to the Laguna Seca racetrack. I just saw these consent counter items for almost $1.5 million and a half. It just blew me away to find it on the consent counter. After all the public meetings regarding Laguna Seca, and then for the reading, find out that it's just for the next five months, August through December, inclusive, $1.5 million. So I guess I have some questions since the board report and the attachments didn't really go into any detail about where did the allocated money go over the past seven months? What was it spent on? What, what are the assumptions that were referenced? The assumptions didn't come true or something? What were the assumptions referenced? And importantly, where is the money coming from, this $1.5 million? What, where is it being taken from? And I guess I just got information that this is a loan, so will it be paid back? I mean, does the board expect this money to be paid back? That this is just, just, just the amount of money, just, just kind of blew me away. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today, Mike. Seeing no further public comment, we can close public comment. I'll briefly make my comments on item number 25, which is the Mental Health Services Act Annual Update for Fiscal Year 2122. I just want to thank everyone who provided comment and participated in the update to this report. A couple of highlights that I just wanted to, to call out that really struck me were that 48% of Monterey County households speak Spanish. That interviews for the report revealed the needs of community members who speak languages other than English and Spanish are not being met. And that there, there are additional concerns over the needs, the mental health service needs for those who don't qualify for medical or don't have private insurance, which I believe is somewhere around 15% of our Monterey County population, fairly significant. We have recently made some significant investments to the county to support additional communications efforts. But on page 11, under the community listening parties, there was a clear trend that community members overwhelmingly identified communications as the greatest space for improvement with our county mental services program. And then I want to also just acknowledge and chime in with my support that there, the county does have a commitment to continue to provide culturally specific early intervention services. And specifically called out some sub-demographics of Monterey County, including our Latino population, African Americans living in Monterey County, and the LGBTQ+ community. So those are my comments on 25. And then on 29 is a very small agreement to participate, for the county to participate in the Weston Celebration. It's a small exhibition agreement for $125. We're going to have our cannabis education program staff. We'll have our, some of our medical eligibility program staff, our tobacco control program staff, and environmental folks out doing community education. And I just wanted to ask that we also, as a, as a county, planning on that day to provide some COVID testing and vaccination outreach at that as part of our contract if possible. So that was my comment on number 29. I'd be happy to entertain a motion for the consent calendar items 20 through 49, excluding 33, which was pulled by the department, and then 36, 41.2 and 41.3, which we'll do separately.
Madam Chair, I also had comments on 25.
Great, we'd love to hear them.
I just want to give an additional thank you to everybody on the Behavioral Health Commission, you know, Mental Health Commission. They've done an incredible job of getting us to this point, and I know that our staff worked really hard to bring this forward. There was a lot of starts and stops, especially with COVID. And so I don't, I don't want to neglect to say thank you to that entire group for doing the work, especially through the pandemic virtually. And for a lot of us, technology was a challenge with that group, and some of the meetings started a little rough. But again, they found a way to get through it and create a great product, given the situation that we were in. And I think that it's going to really help our community coming out of the pandemic and the way that it's been set up. So with that, just wanted to say thank you to them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Lopez, and thank you for representing the Board of Supervisors on the Mental Health Commission. We appreciate your, your voice there. I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Phillips, a second from, from Alejo, I believe. And this was for number 20 through 49, with the exception of 33, 36, 41.2 and 41.3. Could we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Leho.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez.
Aye.
Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye, thank you. The initial consent calendar passes. My comments on 36, 41.2 and 41.3, I'm going to be abstaining from a vote on this. I really, we, we have some very significant items that are on the consent calendar regarding Laguna Seca and some amendments to the agreement that we have for the, the, the contract for operation of Laguna Seca. The board's being asked to approve over $1 million with, with, without a, a source of funding identified that we're going to be deferring to the, the CAO to identify. And I, I just am not clear on the... I'm not comfortable with the, the risk as it's been proposed in the staff report and would like to get more information. So at this point, I'll be abstaining from a vote on these three items with a request for staff to bring back more information for the public and the board as well. If there's any other comment on these three items, otherwise I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I, I, I do. Frankly, when I read the board report, I, I can understand Mr. Weaver's concerns after reading the board report because it wasn't set out that this is basically working capital that's being provided by someone who's running a force, someone who's running a, a pretty big facility for us. So Mr. Norigi's here, maybe just for the sake of the public to hear what, what the request is. I, I just think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Norigi, would you like to make any brief comments on these three items?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So first of all, the request is really for working capital, excluding the management fee. And I would agree with Supervisor Phillips. I, I don't believe the board report was properly put together. And I believe you all know I am not allowed to see, I don't see board reports before they come forth. So we can first take a look at the management fee. The management fee actual expense increase is minimal at best. The big increase is due to A and D now employing certified, people that were employed by certified to handle the corner workers, the gates, and those that actually oversee and manage the track when it's rented. That expense is about $665,000 a year. But that expense is completely charged to the track renter, where there's also a markup of 20 or 25% that stays with the county. The additional adds as it relates to certain positions, one being two people in the accounting department, a volunteer coordinator. Accounting was to be handled 100% by the county, and that has never materialized. There's never been accounting staff onsite. I believe they were pulled back in February or just after COVID hit. The security department is another add. When I assumed the park, and this is for the entire park, not the track, it was under contract by the county at about $150,000 a year. I brought in one full-time supervisor for security and three part-timers, and that's coming in at roughly about $110,000 a year, so also saving money with extended hours. And we got rid of all the riffraff that was literally living in that park under the previous operator and security department. As it relates to the allowed expense account, that is just working capital. My allowed expense account per the agreement is $150,000. I must provide tremendous backup to get that reimbursed. It is not used for my firm. It's used to run the business appropriately for the track. And they have, the amendment that I agreed with allows it from August 1st to the end of December to be increased by $350,000, bringing it to a total of a half a million. The comments made by Supervisor Phillips and Supervisor Adams is also spot on. The pandemic walloped the event business, walloped it, just like it did for hospitality in this county. They are not, they just don't have the financial funds to carry a bill like they had to in 18 and 19, 60, 90, sometimes 120 days be paid by the county. We don't provide them some type of advanced financial support based on a contract. They will not show up. And Laguna Seca is one venue that relies heavily on vendors because we just do not have the infrastructure for the type of events and the number of spectators that come to visit. I also would like to point out that once the payroll management fee account is reconciled for June 30th, I would have returned close to over $1.1 million of my management fee to the County of Monterey. And I find it rather disturbing that was not mentioned in the board report. During the pandemic, I ran your business that you own like a private sector operator, and I saved the county over $1.1 million, not to mention the other expenses that we cut back on. So I, yes, the increase is over 1.1, but I also gave you back 1.1. And this is just working capital, except for a minimal amount for when I had to look at the Exhibit A, which is in my agreement, of the staffing titles and salaries being paid. I also reduced two or three major salaries and put them in line to what people should be paid for their jobs. And I've also brought on some key people that were required. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I would ask you to please approve the amendment as it is desperately needed for this year's event season. Thank you.
Thank you for the additional information and for adjusting some of the questions that have been raised and comments. I think at this point, we, unless there's other questions or comments from my colleagues. Can you entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second, approving.
36, 41 point, or do you want to talk to 41?
No, same questions and comments for all of them. This is 36, 41.2 and 41.3.
Second.
Right, so we have a motion from Adams. We have a second from Phillips for 36, 41.2 and 41. Right. So we have a motion from Adams. We have a second from Phillips for 36, 41.2 and 41.3. Could we get a roll call vote, please? Actually, hold, hold on. We did public comment on all of the consent. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So we'll take a roll call. Thank you.
Supervisor Lejo.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez.
Aye.
Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, ask you.
I'll be abstaining from vote on this. Thank you. All right, we are wrapping up consent calendar, moving on to other board matters. This is item number 12 on our agenda and I will welcome, I will start with Zoom. Supervisor Lopez, did you want to kick us off for board comments today?
Sure, Madam Chair, just, you know, it's been a long pandemic and I want to thank Javier Becerra, our Health and Human Services Secretary for coming out this last Friday to see the vaccine clinic that we put on with Growership or Supervisor Lejo and I were there. Just appreciative of our Congressman Manetta bringing him out to see the work that we've done to help curb the pandemic here in our communities. And at the same time, remind folks that we're not, we're not through this. It's not over. You know, in terms of new variants and additional folks getting sick in our community, it still exists. We saw a press release that went out from our messaging from, from Mayor Carroll and friends who helped us put word out there that the housing in San Lorenzo Park has increased in terms of usage in the last week. So please continue to stay safe, do what you can to keep your and your loved ones safe during this mask up when appropriate. And keep your hands washed as Karen Smith will remind us and do what you can to, to keep everyone in our community safe through what we don't know is coming forward. And so I just want to thank them for their continued work. And with that, I'll wrap my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Lopez. Supervisor Lejo, do you want to go next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, last week I had to step off our meeting for about an hour and a half. Because I was invited by the governor's office to be in Traverse, California, which is in Tulare County, to be there for the, the historic signing of the $6 billion broadband bond package. I was there with Tulare County Supervisor Eddie Valero. And Senator Caballero was there as well as along with other state legislators for that, for the, for that historic occasion. So I'm, I'm excited that, you know, our county has been recognized for our leadership as a, in a local government role or voice to push, to make sure that these changes got done. There's more work to do before the legislative session ends on September 10th. But this is the, the biggest part of that, those negotiations. And I was really honored to be there representing Monterey County, CSAC and the Latino Caucus of California County. The next day we did, Supervisor Lopez and I were also invited to have a broadband virtual town hall with Assemblymember Rivas. And again, on the topic of how we could advance broadband in Monterey County and the region. So it was, it was a good, good discussion also with Senator Caballero and Assemblymember Cecilia Aguirre Curry, another leader on the, on the policy topic in Sacramento. And then of course, on Friday, the, the next, the next day was the, the Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra visiting us. And I think it was just a, a rec, a national recognition of the good work that has been done here. And even seeing the, the estimated percentages of farmworkers at 75% who have been vaccinated, being higher than our county average and being higher than the national average of vaccination really is a compelling and inspirational story about our farmworkers who are, who have not only worked through the pandemic, but even when asked to protect themselves and their families and community, they have also stepped up in getting vaccinated as well. So I really, I think that's a, something to really be proud of. And Javier Becerra and his staff even said they want to replicate the Monterey County model in other hard hit areas like Imperial Valley in the, in Yuma or Arizona. So our, our example, it, it was likely to be used as, as a model for doing other good collaborative work with employers, local government, healthcare professionals like Clinica de Salud, Growershippers and, and the community as well. So it was really a memorable day for me. And the only last thing I would announce is that tonight we do have a, a virtual meeting that I want to invite Salinas residents to join in on. Our Parks Department is having a, a community input session on the potential BMX and BMX pump track and new skate park being proposed in Salinas. We had a good turnout of residents on Saturday morning and this is the second virtual meeting. So I want to thank, thank Ms. Larrable for, and her team for leading these efforts and soliciting the input from our community members. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Lejo. We'll move over to Supervisor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Probably everybody knows that we have our board recess coming up and I think everybody's about ready for it. Wendy looks like she's dressed for it already. This is good. Okay, getting in the mood. So with the upcoming recess and no board meetings, though, in the next few weeks, I wanted to make a couple of comments today about some of the events that will be taking place while we are in recess, particularly around car week coming up in August. After this past pandemic year and the, the hard suffering that the hospitality industry particularly had to go through, it really pleases me to see some of the annual events that we're so accustomed to seeing coming back. And events that are really stellar Monterey County events, I am so happy to see them coming back. It really gives me hope that economic recovery for the hospitality industry truly is underway. I want to specifically though, as I talk about this, call out on within our county staff, the special events task force, which has just been doing excellent work and going above and beyond in the face of some rather daunting circumstances. There was an event that has been planned somewhat for, out in the Carmel Valley area in Carmel Valley Village. And the task force, the force has really led the way in being a public forum, providing a forum for public input on this, on this event that, you know, really has more problems than, than it can, can face. It's a new event. It hasn't been done before. But at any rate, the, the special events task force has really gone over the top and looking at the permitting process and really looking at opportunities to be able to improve not just this event, but all of the events that we have throughout the county during car week and the coordination of them so that our local residents are impacted far less than they might be if things just happened in, just, you know, without any kind of order. So I'm, I'm really very pleased that the way things have gone, have gone. Also want to say that as we look at how to improve the, the special events that we have, I think we need to better address certain special events that take place on private properties that impact Monterey County residents and resources. And then finally, I, I think that we also need to take a much closer look, or at least a close look at how the impacts from events are really being mitigated. And whether we are recovering the county's costs to the, for some of these events. I know that the local jurisdictions addressed this issue some time ago. And rather than just recouling the costs, there are fees that people have to pay to have events in the cities of Monterey, cities of Carmel and cities of Pacific Grove. And I'm unclear if there are some reasons why the county doesn't do that, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we can take a look at that and see if we in fact should be doing something more to provide, really ensure that we're recovering our costs as well as providing some reciprocity to the, to the residents. And then finally, today we're going to be adjourning our meeting in memory of just a fabulous friend of mine, a woman named Suzie Franklin. And I'm going to be really, really delighted to be able to talk about Suzie at the end of our meeting. So thank you for your time.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention, I, I did a board referral that, that Charles McKee will address. Because in North County are, one of our major, major problems is water and seawater intrusion and especially in the Castroville area. And if we can find any reliable source water such as D-SAL, that, that's critical to us. And I know it's not just us, the Castroville Water District, but the Pajaros, Sunny Mesa, and even Salinas is looking for an independent water source. We've done some, we're talking about expanding C-SIP, but that doesn't help for the residential needs. And we did a similar referral back in March of 2018 that we kind of let dropped. And so I thought if so far, no public entity has stepped up to do a D-SAL project for us in North County. And most of the comments that came in were people on the peninsula. And I don't, I don't want to get into the water problems on the peninsula. I'm looking about what we can do for, for North County, for my district. And so that's why I did the referral. And I know to me, whoever can step up and provide a, a water source, a reliable water source where we need it, especially when we're pumping into the deep and making saltwater intrusion worse. We, we have to look for the right kind of solutions. So that's why I made the board referral. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. I would like to invite the public to a couple of community meetings that I'll be hosting over the break. The first will be on Thursday, August 12th at 10:00 AM. We'll be welcoming our Parks Department staff to talk about county-owned property on the former Fort Ord, commonly known as the youth camp or the former travel camp. We're soliciting some feedback and ideas about how we can best utilize this space for recreation services moving forward. The second community meeting that I'll be holding is on August 18th. And that will feature our new registrar voters, Gina Martinez. We've got information posted online about both of those meetings and how to join us via Zoom. And let's see here, a couple of other things. I just wanted to thank my colleagues Supervisor Lopez and Supervisor Phillips for taking the lead on working with the illegal dumping task force. I, I understand the challenges that our community is facing with the illegal dumping. And I think that having some board leadership working on that issue will be valuable and important. While we are on break, our students will be returning to school. Monterey Peninsula Unified returns to school August 4th. I believe Salinas schools are returning those first two weeks of August as well. So as we have visitors coming into the community and everyone, the workforce who has children, those kids will all be returning to school with some big adjustments. So just wanted to recognize and call out all of our teachers and parents. And I ask everyone to drive safely as we have children back out on the streets. And then finally, I just wanted to, again, acknowledge that the, the county of Monterey has followed in partnership with some of our partner, some of our, our fellow counties in making a recommendation for masks to be continued to war, for people to continue wearing masks inside, indoors. And it is not a mandate, it is a recommendation. But I would hope that, that the county, county staff and county leadership recognizing that this is a recommendation from the county can model that, that leadership for our community as one more way to keep our, our neighbors and our children and our, our, our loved ones safe as we continue to learn more about how the, the virus is moving through the community. I think those were all of my comments for today. So thank you. Are there any public comments on the board comments? If so, please raise your hand so we can call on you. And we have Tammy Jennings. And Tammy, this is, this is just public comment on any of the comments that the board made. We'll have general public comment coming shortly. But if you're with us and wanted to comment on board comments, we'd welcome to hear from you.
I'm sorry, wrong time. Oh, comment.
We'll call you next. Thank you. Next up, we have item number 13, which is our county administrative officer comments and referrals. I'll pass the microphone over to Charles McKee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any comments today. Do have a new referral as Supervisor Phillips mentioned, which is to expand the list of entities allowed to own and operate desalination facilities to provide additional water supply while maintaining protections for health and safety. Sorry, health and welfare, obviously health and safety too. And Supervisor Phillips mentioned the, the board considered a similar referral back in 2018. This one's a little more expansive. In my understanding of when 10.72, which is the county chapter, which applies to desalination plants and the requirements therein for public ownership. When it was originally adopted, I think it was primarily designed to address the needs of making sure that anybody who came forward with such a plant or to have the correct or the technical managerial and financial resources and abilities to be able to operate such a facility in a way that protects the public health and welfare. And I think that's the intent of going forward with this referral also. And so we'd be happy to bring something back for the board to consider at a future meeting.
Chair. Thank you, Charles. Supervisor Adams. So can you just tell me, Charles, do we have to do a SEQA reviewed for an amendment?
That's all premature at this point. Whether you do, you know, you always have to do some sort of SEQA look at, at new projects. You know, depending on, you know, what the project is. And so if SEQA is, and further analysis under SEQA is required, such as in, you know, in addition to something called an initial study, that is something that would come back to the board for consideration, but it's something that the community development staff and environmental health staff would have to look at and determine the appropriate review that might be needed.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments and referrals and questions. We'll take it out to public comment. We have one hand raised. This is public comment on the board comments. I'm sorry, on the CIO comments and referrals. Melody Chrislock, we'll give you permission to unmute and share your comments with us.
Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. Public Water Now does not oppose D-SAL. We do oppose private ownership of our water. Water is a resource we hold in common, allowing it to be controlled by private companies who are not answerable to the public is bad policy. If you live on the peninsula, you've seen where this leads. If you live in Salinas or North County, you haven't had the experience of huge water bills and mismanaged resources yet. It's sad that the five districts in this county cannot work together for the good of the public. First three of you tried to force a privately owned D-SAL plant on the peninsula, ignoring the voter mandate to be rid of Cala. Now Supervisor Phillips wants to change the law to allow another privately owned D-SAL plant to supply everyone except the peninsula. Is no one looking ahead to a regional D-SAL solution that supplies everyone and isn't publicly owned to keep the cost of water down? Why the rush? Before you amend 1072 to accommodate one company, the county should want to know a whole lot more about Liberty's project. What are the environmental impacts of changing this law? Does it require an EIR? Private ownership of water is about profit. It's a risky proposition for any community, but especially where water supplies are limited. Please do not allow amendment of 1072.
Thank you for your, for your comments, Melody. Next up, we have Tammy, followed by Margie K.
Hi, my name is Tammy Jennings. I live in Monterey. I am opposed to amending to this amendment. Things that require life, water and air should not be for profit. No one should profit from us needing water to live. And I'm sorry, I, that's my firm belief. I have nothing against D-SAL. I have nothing against any kind of water resources coming to light. But I do not think that any entity should make a profit from water or air, things that we need to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tammy. Next up, we have Margie, followed by Susan Shivoni.
Good morning. I support and urge the Board of Supervisors to retain the current language of Health and Safety Ordinance 10.72 and all of the ordinance language. Liberty Utility has plans to desalinate water outside of the coastal zone, but the D-SAL facility would be in Moss Landing on land deep water D-SAL had considered desalining, desalinating water from the submarine canyon out in Monterey Bay. Liberty Utility does not qualify as a private business. Ordinance 10.72 clearly states a public agency must own and operate a desalination facility. If the Board of Supervisors chooses to allow the referral to be placed on the referral matrix for the language to be changed, there could be a proliferation of small D-SAL facilities. of small D-SAL facilities up and down our Monterey County coastline. An environmental impact report must be written at the cost of the county before any change in language is considered. Please do not allow this referral by Supervisor Phillips to be placed on the referral list matrix. Keep the current language of Ordinance 10.72. Just say no. Thank you. I'm Margie Kay, a North County landowner.
Thank you for your comments today, Margie. Next up, we have Susan Schiavoni, followed by Lisbeth Fisher.
Thank you, Susan Schiavoni, Seaside Advocate for Public Water. Please reconsider amending County Code Section 1072. This ordinance was passed to ensure a future publicly-owned D-SAL plant to regionally serve the area and to avoid high profit oriented costs and rates, retain local public control of water resources, and adhere to environmental laws. Why invite the possibility of another private utility to assert control of a public water system? Water solutions should be a public effort and regionally beneficial. The example of Cal-Am's wildly increased rates and profit margin and illegal water take should be an example. Add to that its current effort to now pass on all costs of accruing additional water systems to ratepayers. Also, proposed changes to Section 1072 prior to consideration by the public or decision-making bodies does require the completion of a full and complete environmental impact report on the impacts of this decision. The County of Monterey would be responsible for completing and paying for this study. What project is under public consideration to propel this action? Please do not give away water resources to a private for-profit entity by amending away the public's right to ownership of its water resources. Thank you. And I also want to thank you for everything the county has done during COVID. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today, Susan. Next up, we have Lisbeth, followed by Marley.
Good morning, Chair, Squo and Supervisors. I am Lisbeth Fisher, resident of Marina and Chair of Citizens for Just Water. I am very concerned that an ordinance is being considered to be undone allegedly primarily for the benefit of a company offering an unproven technology. It is worrisome that there has been no successful project of extraction seawalls. Though it has been considered in Southern California, it was rejected because of the basic flaw in logic. Hasn't the conventional wisdom been to prevent more water, more seawater intrusion by decreasing water extraction, not increase it? Regarding the proposed seawall, why would this ocean water not seep around the endpoints? We would all love a project that would simply solve the water issues of a region, but please act carefully until there is scientific confirmation that the project is viable. And certainly do not consider amending a county ordinance for such, for such a project before completing a full and comprehensive EIR. The SVGB GSA will soon be conducting its own AEM study, which is great. We need to further understand all the underlying water dynamics before making decisions that will impact all water uses of our basin. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this morning. Next up, we have Marley, followed by Wallace Nolly.
This is Marley Milton from Carmel Valley. Please reject the proposed amendment to County Code 1072. The code has been in effect for decades as written because water is a vital necessity for all people that should be publicly owned and managed for public benefit. Please resist powerful private interests that think of water now as the new oil. The proposed amendment will invite domestic and foreign corporations, hedge funds, oligarchs, and water speculators to come to Monterey County for free water for D-SAL. It will allow them to operate with very little if any local accountability, immune from challenges from local ratepayers and those who care about the environment. Our current for-profit water monopoly, Cal-Am, imposes the highest rates in the nation and places shareholder profits first and foremost. But water must not become just another commodity that profiteers buy and sell. That's why a large majority of Monterey Peninsula voters passed Measure J. If feasible, we hope to join the 80-plus percent of Californians who benefit from publicly-owned nonprofit water systems. We don't need more monopolies. Please say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Marley. Next up, we have Wallace, followed by Anna Thompson.
Good morning. Good morning. Hope you can hear me. For too long, I'm a, I'm a, well, not only I'm a Monterey Peninsula ratepayer and resident. For too long, Cal-Am chills and insinuated themselves into governmental decision-making groups to voice the dictates of this for-profit water utility onto beleaguered ratepayers who overwhelmingly voted to buy out Cal-Am. Now we have before in this proposal to amend County Code 10.72 to allow private ownership of D-SAL facilities in the county. Ratepayers have learned how frustratingly difficult it has been to control Cal-Am skyrocketing rates over several decades. This proposal is clearly to enable for-profit water and other utilities to further disregard citizen participation by disallowing county residents a seat at the table. Cal-Am's track record indicates their primary interest is maximum profit. Over 80% of water facilities in the U.S. are publicly owned and operated at significantly lower rates than private companies. Allow residents to be an important part of the solution. To urge county officials to do what the voters intended them to do, protect the residents and their environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today. Next up, we have Anna Thompson. And then we'll move to our phone calls.
Anna Thompson, Carmel. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on an issue that is very close in heart and dear to my heart. I strongly believe that no corporation should ever be allowed to own or manage an essential resource or infrastructure like water supply and delivery systems. A for-profit corporation's only objective is to maximize returns for its shareholders and let the consumers assume all costs and risks. Since the corporation has guaranteed a high rate of return on its investment, there is no incentive for the company to do a thorough cost-benefit analysis and make objective assessments of all risks and liabilities associated with the installation of a D-SAL plant. Our water system should be community-owned and be managed by public agents. Why would we want to allow a corporation to profit on our water? What kind of legacy do we want to leave behind? Please reject the amendment to County Code 10.72. I believe there are still compelling reasons why the ordinance was passed 30 years ago. I request that a full and comprehensive environment impact report be prepared by the county before any consideration of amending the ordinance is allowed to be considered by the supervisors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Anna, for your comments. For those who are calling in via phone, you'll need to dial star six to unmute yourself. We will start with caller ending in 811. And you'll need to press star six.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Kelly. My family has been in North County for 50 years. I have four Kelly brothers. My dad's Wayne Kelly. He has breakfast with some of the top agricultural people in the county every morning. And I applaud Liberty for, you know, trying to do the D-SAL. I think, I haven't looked at the plans, but I think it's like, you know, we need water. But I also think we need to let the dust settle with Cal-Am. I don't think this is the time for Liberty to be attempting to change this rule. I think they need to do a lot more steps with the EIR and a number of other things to, to, you know, face a lot of the issues that are going to come up. And to me, the, this is like, should be one of the last things that we do to amend this, to amend this article. One of the main reasons being if we, you know, if we keep this article, we can always add an exception to Liberty in the future. But to me, it just seems a little sidestep to try to do this now, especially when we have some of the supervisors not supporting the will of the public in Monterey to change a Monterey County rule that could benefit other companies other than Liberty. So this is not the time to be changing the rules. And
Mr. Kelly, thank you for your comments. Great. We're out of time for your comments, but thank you for your comments. I have one more hand raised. Kathy Bialla. Thank you for joining us today.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Kathy Bialla. My comments represent my own individual opinions and not expressing the position of the Marina City Council on which I have the privilege of serving as a member. It's not prudent to make a significant change to a very important ordinance on the basis of only one project for which there may be no future feasibility. If the project developer has confidence that their methodology will work for the area, then the developer must demonstrate the scientific integrity through a full EIR review before the county amends this vital ordinance. This ordinance has enormous relevancy to all parts of the county. In fact, compromising the D-SAL ordinance will dismantle a regional vision for sharing the benefits of a mutually, I'm sorry, a regional D-SAL project under the direct control of all public agencies involved. Private companies' expertise can still be utilized under the contract, but the public agencies will be in the driver's seat managing and overseeing all services and costs. An EIR will answer the many questions and concerns about a proposed project's impacts to current water resources, infrastructure strains, and farmland in the affected areas. Please conduct a full EIR review. We may unknowingly create devastating effects for county communities. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you for joining us today, Kathy. Are there any other public comments on our CAO comments and referrals this morning? Seeing no further, we have one final hand raised, phone caller number 312, and you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself and share your comments. We do have a minute 30 on the clock this morning.
Oh, good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisor members. My name is Margaret Ann Copernall. Good morning again. I'm so happy to be here. I just want to say I concur with all my colleagues who spoke previously. I also strongly oppose this amendment to Code 1072. I think that it's very important that SEQA requirements that mandate a full EIR be completed due to the extensive environmental impact issues that are involved. The previous settlement agreement pertaining to the subject ordinance was concluded with Cal-Am funding multimillion dollar county costs. As par for the course, Monterey Peninsula ratepayers are the stuckeys for these and other costs. Ratepayers have among the highest water rates in the nation. Cal-Am gets many kudos for its donations to community events and campaigns and charitable contributions, but the ratepayers get no credit. All they receive are higher and higher charges on their water bills. So I'd like to say that those who are conflicted or have no affect it constituents have a responsibility to listen to those in charge, the voters, the citizens who are affected. Please do what is right. Citizens voted for and pay for you to represent them in not private for-profit enterprises. Please follow the law, obtain a full EIR, be wise, comply with SEQA. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your hard work.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are out of time for comments, for your comment today. For anyone else who is joining us and wants to submit written comment, the board always welcomes your communication. Please email us at cob@co.monterey.ca.us. And I will just mention that we do have a handful of emails that have already been received in regards to this referral. So thank you for joining us today. Thank you for your comments, and we appreciate the verbal and written communication. Seeing no further public comment, we will close this item and move on to item number 12 this morning, which is our, I'm sorry, we will close item 13 and move on to item number 14 on our agenda, which is general public comments. This would be the time for general public comment, which includes comment on issues or items that are not otherwise on today's agenda. Public comment will be limited to a minute 30 seconds again this morning. And our open meeting laws do require that elected bodies conduct our business in public and limits our discussion to items that are posted on the agenda. So that may mean that we are not able to respond directly to your public comment. We welcome your verbal comments, or as I mentioned before, you're welcome also to always send us written communication via email. For public comment, we'll start with Melody Chrislock. Thank you for joining us, to be followed by Eloise Shem.
Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. This board's appointees to LAFCO are obstructing the mandate of the voters. Supervisors Alejo and Lopez are stalling the Cal-Am buyout for no good reason. The Water Management District has asked LAFCO for conditional approval of their latent powers based on the outcome of eminent done. This should be granted, but instead Supervisor Alejo wants more studies at the public's expense. It's naive to believe Cal-Am's claims. Just because they say they are worth a billion dollars doesn't mean the district's feasibility study is in error. In past situations like Felton, Cal-Am has typically claimed appraisal values of two to three times what their system sells for. The feasibility study was done for the district, and it was independent and unbiased, and the cost to the public was $66,625,000. The district asked the consultants if the buyout was feasible. The answer was yes. That study will have to hold up under the scrutiny of the court. Why would the district risk a biased or faulty study? They have every motivation to be sure this is feasible before proceeding. Yet Supervisor Alejo accuses the district of bias while he accepts campaign contributions from Cal-Am and the law firm representing them. Who is biased here? Next time you appoint LAFCO representatives, please consider fair and equitable representation for the peninsula.
Thank you for your comments, Melody. Next up, we have Eloise Shem.
Okay, this is Eloise Shem. Can you hear my, my microphone?
We can. Thank you for joining us. We have a minute 30 on the clock for you today. Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to comment that I am now becoming a recipient of the United Way American Rescue Plan rental assistance. And I want to say that, you know, it was very, very arduous, and it shouldn't have been in terms of applying, and it put me in a very detrimental situation. And it took nearly two months for them to be processing it. And, you know, when people are out of work and they're in the middle of a pandemic and they're worried that they're going to be thrown out of their housing, that's just not okay. So I don't know why they, they took so long to process it because with the city of Monterey, they processed it in two days. And with the United Way, it took two months. So they, they need to up their game there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today, Eloise. Seeing no further public comment, is there anyone in the audience for public comment? Nope. All right. We will close public comment, and we will recess to lunch. We will reconvene back here at 1:30 for our scheduled afternoon items. Thank you all again for joining us this morning.